Good afternoon, welcome to the Monday, June 20th, 2016, 3:00 PM special meeting. The purpose of the special meeting will be for the Board to take action on the following item: A settlement agreement relating to Growth Management Hearings Board case numbers Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present this afternoon. To start our meeting this afternoon, we're going to have John Peterson, our Planning Director, come up and set the stage. He will introduce Nina Carter from the Growth Management Hearings Board. Then we will have brief remarks from each of the different parties. Dan Cat, Spokane Prosecuting Attorney; Rick Eichstedt, Center for Justice; Todd Hume and Nathan Smith, intervenors; Kitty Klitschke, Futurewise; Charlene Kay, Department of Transportation; Dave Anderson, Department of Commerce; and Todd Milkie, former County Commissioner. After each of the parties has an opportunity to speak, then the Board will take action this afternoon. All right, with that, John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have the pleasure today to introduce to you Nina Carter, who's a member of the Growth Management Hearings Board. I won't go into Nina's extensive background in detail, but I can say that she was one of our two mediators that led this discussion, and I think she's got some very exciting news to share with us today. And with that, Nina Carter.
Great, thanks, John. Thank you, Nina, and welcome.
Thank you. Before I start, I'd also like to recognize Margaret Pageler, who was the other co-mediator. And for those of you in the audience, you may know that Margaret had emergency eye surgery last Wednesday for a retina problem. So she sincerely regrets not being here, but she said, "Congratulations for all the hard work that everybody's done," and wishes you well on the next steps. So, as you know, I'm a member of the Growth Management Hearings Board, but Margaret and I came over as mediators to help the county get through four different cases. And I'll go through the slideshow to help you understand what we did. Also, I wanted to let people know, for the audience, there are some yellow handouts up here that are information sheets, if you want the sort of basics of what we came up with. So why was this settlement created? As you all know, 25 years ago, the state legislature created the Growth Management Act after much dismay about how the population was growing in the state, and most counties and cities adopted a comprehensive land use plan. The county, Spokane County, did so, but eventually, there were several petitioners who disagreed with the comp plan that you had adopted. So you had four decisions that were appealed, and they went up and down the court system, costing everyone quite a bit of money. And so you wisely picked up the phone and called us, as did almost everybody else who's involved in this. Margaret and I were amazed, because every time we talked to each of the parties before this got started, mediation was their idea. And so we thought, "Well, then mediation is a good idea if everybody agrees with it." So we decided to move ahead. Mediation seemed the best way to deal with these four different cases that had been so complicated and so trying for everyone. So how did this all happen? We started here in May, last year, in this room, actually. So there were about 23 people that showed up here, and Dan Cat organized everything. And we came into the room, and we said, "You know, this is not exactly a mediation room." So we quickly moved over to the Red Lion, where we actually had a table, and we could sit down. And we took our lunches, and we didn't order the right lunches, so people had to share. So we actually started working together as a team from day one. And we tried to work out the urban growth area expansions and some of the other comprehensive plan changes that you had made that were contested. We came up with a framework, and I should say "we" together, because it certainly wasn't Margaret or I saying, "You should do this, or you should do that." I was very impressed with John Peterson from Public Works, with Dave Anderson from Commerce, coming up with different ideas. Shar from Transportation, they all started chiming in. And one of the things we noticed was that even though you all live in Spokane, sometimes you don't just pick up the phone and talk to each other. No offense, no criticism, but it was just interesting that we just needed some time together to sit down. And Rick Eichstedt from the Neighborhood Association, and Tim Terhumevich from the Futurewise group over in Seattle, working with their neighborhoods here, they all chimed in and came up with some excellent ideas. And as I said in the last part here, they came up with compromises. Unfortunately, this part you can't read, which is the most important, which we changed to red and then to white, so what this does, I'll read it out loud. "The goal of this, the goal of this is it's predictable and certain. Predictability and certain process to plan for and manage future residential, commercial, and industrial development. So it's predictable, and it is certain." And that is, those are the two words that the intervenors used at the end of this process. They were very happy to know that there will be a predictable process. And the other part that's in black, that you can't read, says, "Provides an agreed baseline and process for the upcoming comprehensive plan changes." So in 2017, you have to do this over again, but you'll have an agreed-upon baseline, which will really minimize the discord and the disagreements. So who was at the table? And as I said, our tables started here, but we quickly went to different locations. We had Dan Cat from your Deputy Prosecutor, we had the County Planning Director, John Peterson, thank you, John and Dan, Nathan Smith and Todd Hume, who were intervenors, and then a lot of individuals, Casey, Dan, Paul, Larry, Neil, Kathy, and Rick Eichstedt. For those of you in the audience that I just read your name, would you please raise your hand? So there's Paul and Kitty and Todd. Milkie was there as our first County Commissioner, Representative, now former County Commissioner, Nathan, Todd. So everyone came to the table and shared lunches, for the vegans, non-vegans, et cetera. So it worked out. And we also had a lot of different tables. So I tried to take some pictures here of different places, but we went to Gonzaga, we went to Eastern State, and we were in several different locations. The others at the table were Five Mile Neighborhood Association, represented by Rick, and the Glen Rose Association, represented by Tim and Kitty, who's also in the audience here. The state, of course, was also at the table, because the Department of Transportation and Commerce had also signed on, and also the Governor's Office. The original person that came was Xander Chateau-Brianne, who's no longer with the Governor's Office, but Rob Duff took his place. And they were interested in it in terms of, "How does the county's planning affect state transportation facilities? And how, from Commerce's perspective, how does this relate to the Growth Management Act overall?" So those were the state representatives, and then myself and Margaret were there as the mediators. Okay, so what did we do? Over many, many meetings, either in person or on the phone, the first accomplishment was that we looked at the urban growth area, and we retained substantially the urban growth boundaries that the county had adopted before. It allows for continued economic growth. This is not about stopping growth. It accommodates preferences for school districts and other jurisdictions, because school districts have to plan for growth also, and you're allowing them to accommodate their preferences of what they need to do. It also says, "There's a policy of no expansion until 2025 unless you meet certain triggers," and this matches the state law perfectly. So if you meet certain triggers of, "Here's the population, or here's a proposal for development," it allows you to do that. And the policy also remains very flexible to accommodate new changing growth patterns. So I would say that overall, between the neighborhood associations, the environmental community, the state, the county, we really came to a good understanding of where this urban growth area is today and where it can be in the future. Another big accomplishment was resolving litigation. As I said before, there were four cases, as Commissioner O'Quinn so eloquently read off all the numbers. Numbers are our fault, sorry. But we have several orders of non-compliance outstanding for the county. We resolved those, and it also resolved this longstanding dispute between Five Mile Prairie and McGlade's property. Basically, it establishes a framework to address future disagreements while giving you some flexibility as you're reconfiguring your urban growth area. And what we mean by that is a framework, I hate to say it, but sometimes it just means picking up the phone and talking to the different parties that are involved, and understanding what the difficulties are, because Commissioner French and Commissioner Milkie made it very clear, the difficult spot that you all are in when you have all sides coming at you wanting everything at once. So he said, "Sometimes talking to each other is the best way to start solving a problem." A couple of other accomplishments, that we looked at the 2013 comprehensive plan, and it adjusts the boundaries, as I said before, and it also provides for an extension of public sewer to the north metro area. And Geiger Spur. Geiger Spur was much discussed, and we came up with a solution that allows development there. It allows it to be consistent with the needs of Fairchild Air Force Base, and it will help you develop some regulations in that area, so you can develop it and promote economic development in that area. And I also wanted to just mention that the Governor's Office appreciates all the work you're doing on this, because they'd like to look at this as a model for how they can use this in other parts of the state, with would-be Air Force, would-be Naval Base with McCord and other bases around the state. So they really appreciated your work on this and would like to talk with you more about The couple of other accomplishments, future population growth, we, as I said before, we agreed on the number that's appropriate for the county now, and we also talked about quantifying future land needs. So this is where the county will go back and analyze how much land it needs within its urban growth area, and then the county will initiate a review of the methodology to understand how much land you need and whether or not an expansion is necessary. So Commissioner French and former Commissioner Todd Milkie were very careful in explaining, "This is not just your decision. It's the cities, the 13 cities within the counties, that you have to work with to help them understand where you're going and where the numbers are coming from, from the Office of Financial Management and the population projection." So this will be some work to do, but it was an important discussion that we had. A couple of other items, the capital facilities plan needs to accommodate that projected population. So if you're going to have X number of people coming, you're going to have to have a capital facilities plan that says, "This is where we need roads, this is where we need sewers." How much is that going to cost? And that was one of the first questions that I dealt with when I was on the Olympia City Council back in the 90s, when we did our first comp plan. "Oh, we're going to put a spur out here, or we're going to put another development over here." Well, how much is that actually going to cost the taxpayers? So this gives you a chance to analyze that, think about it, and think about it with your other jurisdictions. The second bullet there about transportation, it's a, it sets up a good relationship with the State Department of Transportation, so that they know when you are increasing development or putting in new residential areas, what's the spillover effect going to be on the state transportation system? They hadn't had a very clear idea of that before. The parks restores a numeric standard for level of service for parks, so it gives you specific numbers and targets to work towards, rather than sort of a vague or generic version that was there before. And the same thing for law enforcement. It identifies a process to set up this level of service, but it also allows the community to move forward on this amazing grant that you guys got. Jim was just telling me about that, this large sum of money that will help you reanalyze and redo your criminal justice system. So congratulations on that. And last but not least, it's a good faith resolution, that going forward, the parties all agreed to cooperatively try to resolve the disputes that may come out of these settlement agreements. And I don't know if everybody's on each other's speed dials, but they might be, soon, I'm not sure. So the next steps today is the County Commissioner's opportunity to take action on this settlement agreement. Probably by September, Dan Cat was telling me and John, that the population projection forecast should be coming before you, and then completed transportation analysis by the end of the year. And then you have a capital facilities plan and a comp plan update in 2017. So those are my remarks. Can I answer anything that's not too technical? Because I do not want to speak about the actual agreement. I'll leave that up to the attorneys. But I just wanted to thank you all again for having us come over here and work with you, and I've really come to love downtown Spokane and the surrounding area. It's very beautiful. So, thank you.
Any questions for Nina? Yes, how, Madam Chair French?
Well, I'd just like to share with you how much I appreciate the time and energy and the approach that you and Margaret took with regard to taking us through this process. I think you were very careful to not take sides, very motivated to try and find a resolution that met the needs of everybody at the table to the greatest extent possible. So thank you for all the time and energy and the many trips you took over here to help facilitate this process.
You're very welcome.
Yes, thank you. I didn't, you spent time with each of us, but I, not being a part of the process, I didn't get as much time with you, but I just appreciated both you and Margaret coming over and sitting down and hearing from each board member about their concerns and their goals for the outcomes at the end, and for taking us all the way through the process. And I know that we were meeting some deadlines, so I hope that you have an enjoyable trip as you're heading out of the country and doing, getting some travels, and please make sure you let Margaret know that we're thinking about her.
Yes, Margaret retires June 30th, and I leave for Russia on Sunday, so we were, we had a really hard deadline. Said, "We have to get out of the country and out of the job, so you have to get this done."
And I think you had enough, you developed enough respect from both sides that we wanted to make sure that you, that we kept you both through the end, and then also met your deadlines. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Well, I spoke to Margaret, I mean to Nina, ahead of time, and just thanked her for the time she spent with us, because kind of as a newcomer on the block, I had not been involved from the beginning of this particular process, even though I had my experience back on the Spokane City Council on it. But I, again, appreciated your approachability and your listening ear, and so thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And I'll turn it over to the speakers, I think.
Yep, we have Dan Cat, our, one of our Spokane County prosecuting attorneys, and we will be just going down the list in this order, so those of you who are speaking, you know where you are when you're going to be called up. Thanks.
Chairman, Board Members, Dan Cat, Senior Deputy Prosecutor for Spokane County. Nina didn't leave a whole lot to really cover. I can tell the Board that the work that went into this, beyond the mediation days themselves, was exhausting at times. The council, for all the parties, I, I really have no idea how many phone conferences the mediators set up, how many times we discussed and hashed and worked out and reworked and reworded things. Result of it, of all that work, is a proposal that's in front of you today. And it does several things, I think, some of which Nina pointed out. It settles the four litigation matters, the first one which started in 2005. It effectively eliminates the threats of sanctions from the Governor's Office under the Growth Management Act. It, and this was perhaps one of the, one of the things the attorneys worked on most, I think, and that is that it keeps it within the guidelines of the Growth Management Act and the state law. To a large extent in doing that, it restates the portions of the Growth Management Act. And at the same time, it allows us to add clarity to the county's process, so that hopefully, it reduces the number of future appeals that we may end up with on these, on our comprehensive plan process. It doesn't do some things, too. And perhaps the primary thing on that is that it does not take away anyone's individual or organizational rights. It's a process that I believe complies with the law and it's being presented to you. And I think I'm going to stop at that unless the Board has any questions of me.
Any questions for Mr. Cat? Thank you, Dan, and thank you to all the attorneys that put in so many hours into drafting what we have as the very thick final agreement, but thank you. It was, it does take a lot of time and energy to put together. Rick, welcome.
Thank you, members of the Commission. I'm very pleased to be here today. I'm not going to say too much, but I just want to reflect, I've been involved in this dispute since, for 12 years. My, in fact, my very first land use case involving, in the state of Washington, involving the expansion of the urban growth area into the Five Mile Prairie area, if you approve this, will be resolved today. So I'm very pleased, from a workload standpoint, and in fact, if this settles, I was just commenting to Kathy Metke, "I will have no land use cases against the county." And hopefully, this settlement sets a framework where I won't have any more. So I, let's knock on wood, I hope that's the case. But seriously, I, there is a lot of work here, and a lot of give and take. I think the characteristics are a good, of a good settlement is, nobody's completely happy. So I think both sides gained, both sides lose, lost some, but I think the most important thing is that this sets a framework that all of us can work together in the future, where there's predictability, where there's transparency, and where there's an opportunity for early communication between the parties. And I think with that framework, hardwired into this settlement, hopefully, we can resolve early any disputes or misunderstandings the parties have. So I do want to thank the members of the Commission, particularly Al French for his dedication, former member of the Commission, Todd Milkie, the planning staff, Dan Cat, John Peterson, our mediators, members of the state agencies, and all of my clients for working very hard for about 18 months to pull this together. So I obviously urge that you strongly support this settlement. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rick. Appreciate your comments. Todd Hume and Nathan Smith, guys can flip a coin over who you want to go first.
Good afternoon. Todd Hume, on behalf of a number of the intervenors in this case. As intervenors, we have the luxury of not signing, so, meaning we don't have, you know, really any obligations under the settlement agreement, so I can't really speak to the substance of it. But I would, I would like to point out again, the process that I felt like the Board, the Board members took us through was, as Commissioner French pointed out, a very balanced process. I felt like it was very thorough. It was very, there was a lot of agendas, as you might well imagine, and to be able to corral those agendas and keep pushing people towards a resolution on that, I thought was, they did an exceptional job at that. I also found, excuse me, as somebody who practices a lot in this area, the use of this tool to resolve land use disputes is really a fascinating exercise. So often, land use litigation, I think, could be resolved if you had a forum like this, as opposed to the courts. The courts are not really well set up to deal with land use disputes. So I really enjoyed looking at the process as well. Again, no comments on the, on the content of the settlement. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. And Nathan?
Nathan Smith, I'd just like the opportunity also to thank the mediators publicly in the public forum. Again, like Todd, I can't speak to the substance, but do appreciate the fact that the clients that I represented in the UGA expansion case, Ann Ailer, Dwight, and Linda Calkins, appreciated the certainty and predictability that came out with regard to the fixing of their boundaries of the UGA area in the South Glen Rose neighborhood. So with that, again, I appreciate the process, and I appreciate the time, energy, and effort that the parties spent during the mediation process to try and reach resolution. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Kitty?
Hello, I'm very excited to be here today. I think a couple of you know that I started with Futurewise back in 2006, which is about the time that we were starting to talk about urban growth area expansion issues. And I believe I've written formal comment letters and/or testified 14 times about the issue before it got to litigation. And I think what Todd said is actually really true from both sides of the issue, that the way that we were making these decisions and then bringing it to the courts isn't always the best way to deal with it. None of us get predictable outcomes, and everyone- None of us get predictable outcomes, and everyone has to put a lot of effort and resources into these very contentious decisions. So, this process, once we got into mediation, has been pretty amazing. I think one of the best things about it is that it will create a really good process for us with real benchmarks and things that we can agree on and look at that are empirical to make the next decision on the urban growth area expansion. We had a lot of differences of opinion. I think Commissioner Milkie characterized it fairly well about whether it's a capacity issue or it's a characterization of the land existing issue. We had a lot of disagreements on how it should work, and we didn't really have a good forum for discussing those. Going in front of the Growth Management Steering Committee is not necessarily the best place to work out your technical discussion about how it should work. You can just make your comment and go and sit down. And that's what I've been doing for 10 years now. And so, it's really nice to be able to come up here, having had a really deep discussion about all of these issues, and feel pretty confident about how it will work going forward for all sides of the community. We all want to work and live in a great economically viable community with a high quality of life. And I think we all want to protect the rural character of our rural lands and see vibrant growth inside of our urban lands. And it'll be really nice to be able to work with the county on finding a great way to do that, rather than arguing about, like, what the boundaries are and what that's going to look like. It's... I'm really looking forward, if you agree to this settlement, to working on proactive things and more nuanced issues with the county, rather than fighting about these big-picture things for a decade. And then, we would have looked at turning around and having this fight for another 10 years if we hadn't gone through this process. So, I really encourage you to approve this, and I'm really appreciative of everyone and all of their work that went into this. It's been a really hard process, but I think we all learned a lot. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Charlene Kay. And just as Charlene comes up, a thank you to those of you who came from the other side of the state to join us today. Really appreciate that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I would like to first acknowledge our acting regional administrator, Mike Frucci, who's here, and then also Greg Fick, who's in my office, who also participated in the mediation. Great work. Especially thankful to Spokane County and all of the participants for their diligence. It was really a work of diligence and perseverance, and I think we all learned. It was very enlightening for all of us. And from Washington's perspective, we now have a true plan that we can move forward to understand the potential impacts of land use and land use changes and how they affect, particularly, the state system. And now, we can work together to identify strategies on how to mitigate those potential impacts. And even greater, I think that we will have a better opportunity to plan regionally on how to fund those potential impacts. So, I just want to thank Nina and Margaret for sticking with us through it all. It was an exciting time, phenomenal process. We all learned, I believe, a lot from it, and just thank you for allowing us to all participate in it.
Great, thank you very much. Dave?
It's really great to be here under these circumstances. It's been a long year of a lot of hard work, and I'm delighted that we've made the progress we have. Commerce is all about strengthening communities, and our most important partner in that job is local governments. Even when disputes arise, it is delightful to have an opportunity to come together and resolve those. As we've all said, in a mediated agreement, we all have to take some time to understand each other. And I'm delighted that we've had that opportunity to do that, and we've had a chance both to finally resolve the disagreements we had and to create a sound framework to move forward. I'm hopeful that this will not only move forward on this issue, but really help set a foundation for us to continue to move forward on a variety of other issues. We have Commerce and Spokane County. We have a lot of shared interests. We have a lot of shared goals. We basically work for the same people. We all work for the state of Washington, so it's... I'm delighted that we've reached the point where we can now move forward together on this and a variety of other economic development and community development issues as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dave. And then Todd Milkie, former commissioner. And as Todd comes up, I just want to say thank you because, as you all know, he left us in February and took a new job, but agreed to continue working with us because we were so far along in this process that we knew we were down to just a final couple of mediation sessions, and we didn't want to have to completely start over with in those conversations. So, thank you very much for continuing to stick with us as we came to an end on this one, and Commissioner French then joined him. So, Todd.
I really thought taking my other position was one of the reasons I could get out of this, but evidently, that didn't work so well. For the record, I am Todd Milkie. I am a former county commissioner. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I think I do come from a unique perspective in that I've had a chance to walk in your shoes and certainly recognize the pressures that you feel from a lot of different elements within this community as you go forth and try to do your job. I do want to say, from that perspective, there are a couple of things that I think are notable about this. I would say that there's probably no... Let me reverse that. I would say that the Growth Management Act is probably one of the newest and most comprehensive pieces of law in Washington State. And because of that newness, every community across the state is trying to become more and more acquainted with what it does and what it doesn't do. And as much as I have enjoyed working with Nina, I will admit, there is still a lot of ambiguity in the Growth Management Act. With every court decision, we usually increase the clarity with how to interpret that act. But that's not always the case. As has been mentioned this afternoon, this agreement that you have before you resolves four cases. I think it's important to note that one of those cases has been on the books for a long time. It not only predates every one of you, it predates me as well. And I served as the county commissioner for 11 years. So, I think the one case originated in 2004 and was still going on, and it has been going on ever since. The other two of the cases, I think, predate any... Maybe not Al, but I think Al. Predates, I believe, all of the three of you that sit up there today. So, the majority of this work, like I say, are cases that have been on the books for a long time. And what that means is there are a lot of different entities, including the taxpayers, that are spending a lot of money to try to find a resolution in the court system as we move forward. So, that's the first thing, is these are expensive, these are time-consuming cases, and it's in everyone's best interest to get these resolved. So, first of all, what this agreement does do is it resolves these cases, and that's extremely important, like I say, when you consider the time and the expenses to our citizens that are involved in those. The second thing, as has been mentioned, this does create a predictable process for moving forward. And I think that is important because, as I mentioned, not only is this a large piece of legislation that was adopted by the legislature, the very first time a lot of communities adopted their first piece of this was in 2001. For Spokane County, this is the very first opportunity that there was to update the work that was done in 2001. And so, the county and the parties that have been involved in this have tried to figure out how to fill in the ambiguity that exists in state law, and that's been important. What this act... What this agreement does is it further fills in more detail that still is somewhat ambiguous in the state statute, and in doing so, creates that predictability that is so important. I think the third thing, though, is there are a number of important issues that face this region that do get addressed in this agreement. One, and not necessarily in this order, is the North Metro area was an area that was developed in the '70s and '80s. It has septic systems and small lots. And we know, as a matter of good planning, we've got to figure out how to address that issue when those septic systems no longer function. This agreement does that. It found a way to extend sewer to that area without bringing it into the urban growth boundary and therefore protects the Little Spokane watershed and the public health of so many citizens in this region. It addresses some map corrections that have existed and been on the books for a long time, that not only looks at those areas that are urban in nature that were never included in 2001's comp plan. It also corrects some areas of the logical boundaries issue by moving forward. It provides an avenue to pursue the master plan goals of Spokane International Airport to make sure that it can go forward. Certainly, the International Airport is a critical component of the viability of this area. It formalizes the regulatory framework of using JLS land use regulations to protect Fairchild from future encroachments. And I know that that's something that's important to this community. Fairchild is the largest single-site employer, not only of this county, but of all of Eastern Washington. So, it is critical. And the other thing that it does do is I know Spokane County has taken the lead with regard to criminal justice reforms in recreating the criminal... The Law and Justice Council and moving forward in creative ways. I know that because of the efforts of many, that you've been granted the MacArthur Grant to go forward with those reforms. This agreement is consistent with that. It allows you to be creative. It allows you to be flexible in going forward and trying to address what has become one of the largest expenses in your budget, but also one of the most important things for our quality of life and the protection of our citizens in this region. So, for all those reasons, the fact that it resolves the cases, it defines a predictable process and addresses so many of these important issues that have been facing our region for quite some time, those have all been incorporated into this agreement. The parties have worked very well together for the last 18 months. Dialogue has been able to find solutions on many issues. So, thank you for the opportunity to be involved in this, and I would commend you to consider it carefully and consider approving it.
Commissioner French.
I'd like to personally thank Todd Milkie for all of his leadership when he was with the Board of County Commissioners and his willingness to continue to serve the community by working with the county to finish out this process. And I also would like to express my thanks and gratitude to the GSI Board for granting Todd the freedom to participate in this process and give us his time and his wisdom to be able to get through this. So, thank you to both you and your board for all of the time and energy you've spent.
All right, that takes us through each one of our speakers. It is now time for the board to consider action on this item. What is the will of the board?
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the board execute that document entitled "Settlement Agreement" as generally presented this afternoon, which document has already been signed by all signatories but the Board of County Commissioners.
I would second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to execute the document entitled "Settlement Agreement" as generally presented this afternoon, which has been signed by all of the signatories and represented by the groups that you saw here today. Discussion on this item. Commissioner McLaughlin.
I'll probably take the least amount of time, since I'm the one... The newest person on this end. But even though this end is... I'm new, fairly new as a county commissioner. I'm not new to growth management issues from my eight years on the Spokane City Council. But so many of you spoke, said the things that needed to be said, so I wrote down, like, "That was really great." I loved what Kitty said about this being a really, really, really hard process. And just since the executive sessions that I've sat in the last few months, I can tell you, I could tell it was a really, really, really hard process. So, I'm grateful that everybody stuck with it because, bottom line, as a very, very fiscally conservative councilwoman, now commissioner, it's important to me that... I love the fact that I see us talking here together, and I love that... Who said... Rick. Rick, you said that there was a lot of give and take, no side is completely happy, but it sets a framework for predictability and sets up for better communication. I think that was a goal that it's good for this going forward, and I'm happy to see us that we're coming together like that. Todd Milkie, ex-former commissioner, said there was a lot of ambiguity within the GMA. Most of the cases have been going on for a number of years, but this creates now this more predictable process. Personally, as representing the North Side, I'm very happy that we found a way on that North Metro system around those septic tank systems that are, many of them, 40 to 50 years of age, sitting in our Little Spokane aqua... Little Spokane, what do you call it? The Little Spokane River Aquifer area, that I'm glad to see that we're going to find a way to take care of that issue. Todd Hume probably also, he said, you know, this was to gather that we were able to... You were able to corral the agendas and push towards resolution. Probably should thank Nina again for that, for all her help. But again, I think everybody has the... There were other comments, but the comments of needing that clarity, that predictability, opening the doors of communication, understanding that the GMA is not as clear as we'd all like to see it, trying to find that balance between how different definitions and how we feel about good growth, no growth, getting those things on the table to talk. Many of the times, you can find that there's a lot of common ground to work forward in. And bottom line, I don't... I really, really like the fact that there's other work for our attorneys to be working on besides this, and I'm sure all of you have other work that you'd like to get working on. I know Dan probably feels like he needs a vacation. And for all those things together that I'm going to be supporting in favor of this today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner French.
So, I think, first of all, I want to say thank you to all the parties that were involved with this. Every time I get involved in a conversation about planning, and I've been involved in these conversations since the mid-1990s, I always learn something. I like to consider myself a work in progress. And I think out of this, the one thing I came to appreciate is the value of mediation over courts. I've seen good, sound planning overturned by bad court decisions. I've seen bad planning decisions upheld by court decisions and stuff. So, you can't always predict what's going to happen. But I think out of the mediation process, those with disparate interests had an opportunity to come together and share their common... Find their common interests and their common grounds and find solutions. There was one item that we were negotiating on, and we were in a separate room, and I was trying to make an argument on behalf of the county, and it was actually Rick Idstad that came up with the solution. And so, I'm thinking, you know, this has got to be the indication of something good here. The... You know, I can remember starting out with the Horizons process in 1990s and how everything we did was so aspirational about the county... The community we wanted to build, and then working at the city and the Planning Commission and the City Council and the city's comp plan, and how we had goals and visions of what we wanted the city of Spokane to be. And some of them have materialized, and some of them are still works in progress. But I think our heart's in the right place. We still have this desire to want to make Spokane better, and all of us have our own definition of what better might be. But I think collectively, we want this place to be the best place we can make it. And all that work that we did to create aspirational goals, not everything can be our top priority. And I think that was one of those things I learned early on, was that everybody said, "Well, this is important, and this is important, and this is important." And when it was all said and done, the things that we said are important were competing with each other. And so, then it became a process for the community to say, through value judgments, what's most important. And I think that's what we've tried to do here at the county when we adopted the comp plan. And I think the outcome of that, I think, speaks positively to some of the things that we got right, and then some of those things that not everybody agreed to. But I think this settlement agreement is a good resolution. And I forget who said it, but mediation is a process to make And I forget who said it, but mediation is a process to make sure everybody's unhappy. And, you know, I think everybody gave. I think the county gave, I think the petitioners gave, and we worked to try and find a compromise. And so having been through that process firsthand, I'm very happy to support the settlement agreement that we have before us. I think it's good work, and again, I want to thank everybody that participated in the process and demonstrated a willingness to find a solution and not just find a position. So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everyone who dedicated themselves to committing to this process and following through with it. And we're sitting here today saying a lot of thank yous, and I think it might be easy to overlook the tremendous amount of work that went into this from the very beginning. And I'm sure 18 months ago, there were probably many, or maybe even most people sitting around that table that thought we would never see today. That, and throughout the process, there were probably times, I'm sure, that we never thought we would find that compromise. And I think it was Rick who made that statement about compromise and not everyone being happy. But I do think that while we may not have all had the desired outcomes or goals that we started with at the end of this, the fact that we were able to come to compromise and find, so many of the words that we've heard over and over again, compromise, resolution, predictability, you know, quality of life, economic growth, to hear each of you stating those things, so at the end, we, we did accomplish so much. So I appreciate every one of you who dedicated the hours and hours and hours of time that it took to get through the last 18 months to get here, because it definitely was not easy. And from our perspective, where we represent all 490,000 citizens in Spokane County, and with it, within their 13 jurisdictions, every single one of those individuals in jurisdictions having opinions. This is not an easy process. So thank you for all of you. Thank you to the masterful work of Margaret and Nina to guide us and bring us to this place. This does provide that predictability moving forward, and I think that, I think people are tired. I've sensed that general, let's find resolution to these issues so that we, we have a process by which we can move forward as a community. And I believe that we are there. So with that, I do have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt the settlement agreement that has been presented before us, say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. So thank you very much to everyone involved to get us to today. So with that, I believe, Mr. Emacio, that everything that we have advertised for our special meeting, we are through. So thank you very much for being here today, and have a great afternoon. Thank you.